Right with those that approved and supported it, they will go, if we can backtrack on it, if they lost the backtrack or we have this discussion down the road. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Ken, do you want to pull this out for discussion or are you just going to voice your, your?
I'm gonna avoid my vote if, at this time.
Okay, so you'll just vote no on the consent?
Right.
Okay, so then I guess we just proceed as?
If that's.
If it is.
Reported as such.
Okay.
But the motion still passed by three to one.
Right.
So consent agenda is approved and we move forward. Moving on to new business since we have no old business, first item there up is the USDA Rural Development Grant Award. You have an update for us and then we'll move into discussion.
I do, so Chief Birch and I need to connect on this a little bit more and so, so does, I also need to connect with the folks from USDA Rural Development. I also need to discuss more with SCAT, so just a very brief update, we have some of these items that are already budgeted in our current fiscal year budget. A portion of, of the forty thousand dollars that's identified in project number one is include, a portion, not all, but two or three of the eight tablets are included in this current fiscal year budget. Project number two, which includes two police cars and the emergency response vehicle for SCAT, the two police cars we don't need for two, two to three years, correct? And, but the emergency response vehicle is in the current year budget. Project number four, fire gear, radios, they needed them quite badly and they've already been, they've already been ordered, but Chrissy with my contact with Rural Development tells me we may be able to get reimbursed for those since those are purchased on a match to state contract. Fire gear is already in the budget for this coming fiscal year and so is the thirty five thousand dollars in rescue tools. The thing that, the question that we have for, one of the questions we have for Rural Development is, is can, can we piecemeal parts of a project? Because there isn't a full, there's five projects identified in this and there isn't any one project that's completely in the current year budget. So I'm just gonna give you an update on this and then, and we'll have this table this and bring this back to a future meeting, but I really additional information from, from USDA last night. And I wasn't able to connect with her today, so.
All right, any comments or questions regarding this at this time?
Do we know for sure if there's like a deadline to use these funds by?
There is, there's, there's two main, there's two main deadlines, one is within one year we must have initial, or we, and I'm not sure exactly when that year starts. But you know, we, within a year we need to have initial quotes or we need to have quotes on all the items, all of them, whether we're buying them within the five-year timeframe or not. Then overall, there's a five-year timeframe to complete the projects.
So my question, Sam, is in regards to the four projects that we are targeting. Would we assume that the grant money would be distributed on around a thirty percent basis for each one of them?
Yeah, that, the, the grant, the distribution is included in each one, but yeah, for the police equipment award, it's thirty four, and I have it right on the cover of the agenda as a, so we can see it at a glance, but the police equipment award is thirty four thousand of ninety-eight and a half. And the file names on.
Yeah.
Town cloud there under six, so I've got it, I've got it right there, but it averages out to be that, yes.
Okay.
So if, if Rural Development will allow us to piecemeal it, which is what I would like to do, to be able to just, let's, let's just, let's just focus on only what's in the current fiscal year budget, because those are four relatively small bite-sized chunks that Angie and I can take on. There's a lot of paperwork involved in this and we haven't, haven't done this here before, so we have, we have a learning curve, so I would rather take a few small pieces than try to tackle more than this.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Or comments?
So we're gonna table this until?
Yeah, we'll bring it, we'll bring it back when we're ready, it might, it might be next meeting, it might be later, but we'll bring it back.
Okay.
So in terms of initial direction, you kind of have your marching orders then, correct?
I do, I have, the, the sense I'm taking out of this meeting is that, you know, obviously some of these items are already in the budget. And if, if, and you've already supported those items included in the budget, so let's pursue those first since we have budgeted funds for the match.
Yeah, I support that direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It all kind of hinges on USDA's response, if we can do it the way you were talking, that seems to make sense to me, break it down and learn, learn on smaller and then work our way up from there, so.
Yeah, so the next discussion on this might not be an agenda item, it might just be a paragraph in my next report.
All right, then I will suggest we table that and move on to the next item, unless somebody else has another comment or question. Okay, moving on then to item B, an update on America Rescue Plan Funds. And do you have any you'd like to kind of share with us at this time, what about that?
I wrote a fairly lengthy summary on this that speaks for itself, just to, you know, I've had a, had conversations with other, other city managers and it, it seems that a number of them are, are strongly recommending going down after consulting with their city attorneys and council members that they're also going down, many of them are also going down the route of using this for what's, you know, SRF eligible projects, basically anything that's, that's state revolving fund eligible projects for water, sewer, broadband. They are, are the easiest ways to spend this, this money and in our case, we have a, an important project that we have established as a priority since 2016 and it will help everybody in Sheldon in one way or another. One of the ways it really hasn't been talked about much is there's, there is important maintenance that needs to be done on the old water tower. It's much easier to drain and maintain and paint an old water tower when you have a second tower for water pressure reasons, et cetera, and so in, in addition to that, we're, you know, a year or so into a new rate schedule and if we're, if we're able to fund a new water tower out of urban renewal funds and ARP funds and we, we hopefully avoid going into the water revenue fund at all, because we have water revenue fund expenses coming up the next number of years in Clark, some which may be eligible for TIF, most which would be not, so. Todd can answer a lot of this better than, better than I, but the path that I suggested laying out was on September one, we do a set for hearing, so Todd will be here at that meeting, could ask him additional questions and then have a hearing on the fifteenth. Hearing isn't necessary legally, but we've done that in the past to provide additional opportunity for, for comment. There are other ways to spend the money, but we didn't have to look very hard to find an existing priority that really needs to be done.
All right, any other discussion?
No.
And we'd be looking for a motion as listed there under B, sub point two, that we request a hearing notice be drafted and brought to future council meeting to set a hearing. Whether it's September one or September fifteen, do you have a preference on date?
No, if, if we could just draft, we'll bring the notice when, when it's ready, that's okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll proceed with the motion, the request to hearing to be drafted and brought to a future council meeting to set a hearing.
Support that.
Further discussion? Roll call please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Ferrahuna.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, is there anything else, Sam, that you'd like to share at this time? Moving on to our report section here.
Well, we're. First, Kurt, Kurt can talk about that when he gets to his item.
Okay. That's all you have, okay, and Todd's not here, so Kurt, we will turn it over to you.
So, yeah, obviously we saw the census numbers actually were obviously encouraging for Sheldon, which is awesome, the biggest increase we've had in a long time and you look back to two census to go, we were under five thousand, that's always that benchmark, like it's always hard to get over that five thousand mark, which we talk about, but you know, to get to the, you know, the five thousand one eighty-eight in twenty-ten and have an increase of the three hundred and twenty-four individuals for new population number fifty-five twelve is, is pretty, pretty awesome. And a number is a number until you dig into it a little bit and I had the opportunity to do so, Iowa State Extension provided us, you know, around the state with some more in-depth numbers and provided us maybe some rankings on how we sit in comparables to, to other communities across the state of Iowa. And just for an example, based on their report, you know, Iowa primarily is a rural community, I mean, it's a ton of rural, rural populations, rural communities and continue to grow as rural, small rural communities is difficult and it becomes more and more difficult as we move forward, as people are, have been flocking to urban communities more, more often than not. Now, this day and age, maybe they're kind of coming back into some of these smaller rural communities just because of the quality of life, but they reported three hundred and forty communities in the state of Iowa actually saw a population increase this, this census, three hundred and forty. Six hundred and seventy communities actually saw a decrease in population, so it puts us in kind of perspective on where we're at sitting in there. We saw a six point two five percent increase as far as percentage based on population, that ranks us one hundred and sixty-fifth out of one thousand and seven communities that were part of that report, so if you kind of do that, I mean, that puts you in the almost top ten percentile. And then we had an increase of three hundred and forty-two people within this census as far as individuals now living in Sheldon. That ranks us as far as population count change, fifty-seventh out of those one hundred and seven communities that reported as part of the Iowa State report. So when you just look at the numbers on paper, they are what they are, but if you kind of dig in a little bit more and understand what rural communities are doing this day and age, we're sitting pretty good. And Northwest Iowa as a region has been sitting really good, our neighbors all around us had a really good census report for the most part, so I think we're, I think that says a lot for, for our region, so. And if you're interested, according to Iowa State, you know, with our new population of five thousand five hundred and twelve, that ranks us seventy-second in the state in terms of population and that takes in the Waukees, the Yankones, the, the Des Moines, all of that, so. But what it also shows is that we are primarily a rural state with a lot of small communities and, but at the same token, Sheldon is doing pretty good in retrospect, so. Anyway, I think positive, positive numbers for us to consider moving forward and now we look forward to the next ten years and see where we go, so. Anyway, just wanted to share that, if anybody had any questions or comments.
One of the takeaways I'm looking at Kurt, you know, you and I were emailing back and forth a little bit on that, is that I think we have experienced some diversity in our population as well. Which is.
We have.
Which is indication of, of our growth and success too, I think, so.
Correct.
That should be something that we should find some value in.
Absolutely.
With our housing.
Yep.
Emphasis, you know, well employed right now, so.
I think it provides some clarity for us too as we are going through this rural housing assessment. You know, the reason why we're really getting shortage of houses and available rentals is we're kind of seeing, I think, you have three hundred and forty-two people that have to find housing somewhere, so that's where our crunch is coming from, which makes this housing assessment process timing perfect. I think these new census numbers will help drive us forward on base, basis based on population growth and, you know, we, we preach it all the time, you know, good community growth, eighty percent of it comes from internal growth and we've experienced that from our large employers over the last ten years, all internally expanding. And what really is limitating that, are limiting that current, are continuing to expand is this workforce and we're gonna continue to hear that and housing. And, but those are growing pains and I think those are things we just have to tackle and it's not just us, it's everyone around us having the same conversation, so. It's better to have these type of conversations as, as opposed to the other side of the coin, so anyway.
While you're there, talking about this rural housing study, perhaps you could just comment on the number of responses we've had to the survey?
Yeah, so I think during reports last time, I said, I know Sheldon is a pretty competitive community and Jane and Abby both said, I think the record for survey responses for any community in the state of Iowa, which we're undergoing right now, is like five hundred and